...discussed in the building assessment previously presented to council by the collaborative. And provide a guide as to what is needed for our future. So we're gonna have, uh, provide council and all viewers with a visual representation of our current structure. Provide council with information on current needs and trends of a police facility. And provide councils and viewers with potential photos and renderings of these spaces. And I want to make clear any photos in the future need section are just a visual representation for you to get understanding and nothing that's been decided on. So let's get started and talk about the assessment completed on our police station. So what have we done to prepare for this? It's been months of meetings and research to gather data and information on various builds and trends in police station design. I attended a station design conference and had one-on-one meetings with architects regarding cost per square footage. And, uh, discussion on new construction and trends of the police station design. Spoke with wind-up police department regarding their station, which thirty-two thousand square meters police-related. We've met with Redstone Architects, ADW architects who've done walk-throughs of the building. Spoke with the collaborative team who did the building assessment, talked about ideas on whether new versus renovation would be worth talking about. Also spoke to St. Clair Shores and Green Oaks Township who built new police stations. So this project can only be completed with the input of our officers and the help of our people. And some here are, are here today. And our needs assessment was done with a department leadership team that consisted of eight men and women from three to twenty-three years of service. And you can see who was part of that group. So our history begins in nineteen twenty-seven. If you read my recent article in the Trent Times, I included the original article that was posted from October issue of nineteen twenty-seven from the newspaper. Talking about the dedication of the municipal building. We originally housed the city hall, the court, police station, jail, and the Trent library, which was in the basement of our facility. So the building is serviced well over time, ninety-seven years, but was never truly intended to be a police station. It is not set up in a way that is conducive to efficient operations. Full-service jail was added in nineteen seventy-seven. It encompasses sixty-five hundred square feet added on to the municipal building. We offer a full-service jail that could house sixteen full-term and five short-term prisoners. That full-service jail was closed in two thousand and two and much of that square footage is unutilized space and has been for twenty-two years. And if you read the article on the collaborative, much of that space is in state of disrepair. Uh, we used to house prisoners from the downriver, uh, for all downriver agencies for up to ninety days. Uh, this is an important slide to take a peek at here. The average age without the city of Trenton Police Department is thirty-seven years old of a police building. Which makes our current facility sixty years older than the average police station around. I won't go through the names, but you can see them there. We'll talk about current deficiencies, I'll run through them here, then we're gonna get into something more in-depth. So current deficiencies, we have no women's locker room or changing area. No men's locker room, changing area. No training room, no training area or classroom. Our equipment storage is inadequate, currently non-ADA compliant. Our elevator is inoperable and stairs are needed to gain access to the lobby. We have no conference room or area for meetings, emergency operations center. No workout or exercise facility, break room, lunch room, report waiting room. And on multiple occasions, we've had rossage which come down from the basement into our facility. We have unsecure and outdated evidence rooms, no secure interview room in the jail facility. And our jail operations have minimized, it's not efficient to house extended state prisoners. We have no temperature control, our roofs are leaking and often collecting in buckets on the floor. We are now jaded jail and station monitoring and access control system. But we're now, we're gonna get into a few of these slides more in-depth. And I apologize for the pictures, but that is what we live with here, okay? Just last week, um, we were able to hire our fourth female to add to the force after she advanced to police academy in July. And I give credit to these female officers and one is here today, uh, who was on the building assessment committee. Who deserves separate and equal spaces. The lack of female facilities has been troubling and has had a major impact on recruiting. While I say that, men don't have quality facilities either. As we see, they don't have a locker room, but on the right side of this, uh, display is just a bathroom and one shower stall that barely has any pressure. On the left side, you can see raw sewage has come up through the drain several times in the basement. It goes into the bathroom area where some of the officers change. And that's happened multiple times. Lockers don't hold the equipment needed for officers today. Times have changed and it's required more and more equipment. These lockers won't even hold a hanger, they can't fit a bulletproof vest or a duty bag. This one toilet on the right side here are the only private facilities for patrol that are not open to the public. And they've had severe plumbing issues and made these inoperable various times through the year. Where officers are sharing a common bathroom upstairs with general public. This room here is what we call our squad room, so we have a lack of training and community reuse room. Uh, this squad room is the only room available to officers. Narcotics and evidence are handled in the same seat where I'm doing lunch, write reports. Juveniles are also held here, there's no secure area for them. So this, this space here function as everything in the police department. Storage is very limited, dispersed in several rooms throughout the space and even off-site. We have a major problem with exposed wiring and storage. You can see the picture on the left, there's times where I've had to go down and reset the phones and I've gotta pick one of those wires there. I'm not quite sure, but, uh, we, we usually get it working here. But, uh, you can see on the right side of the ceiling, and if you look closely, you can see the water damage, um, on the counter and on the boxes. We've had records and documents of the damage over the years to leak ceilings. Body cameras, tasers, drones and other electronic equipment piled into the squad room on the left side there. Uh, there's no place in the station for dedicated storage. Wiring for internet and electrical is not sufficient. You can see on the right side, extension cords that are routinely run through the station for electronics and heaters, especially in the winter due to lack of basic air conditioning. We talked about, uh, not being ADA compliant. On the left side of the photo there, you can see the wheelchair ramp. That gets you to the, uh, only I guess accessible portion of the station. And on the right side, uh, the elevator, that's the basement, you can see the wall peeling. And in the bottom of the basement, elevator shaft, at times there's been over a foot of water and hydraulic fluid, uh, sitting in the basement. That elevator has been inoperable for approximately a year, there are no parts. We actually had an officer that was stuck halfway in the elevator. He's here today, rescued, you know, without calling the fire department, but, uh, we can't use that, it's been about a year. Numerous times we've had elderly people up just to the main lobby. We don't have a zero barrier, uh, we have three steps just to get up to the lobby. And you can see, uh, we're a basement of a main floor and an upper floor. So it's very difficult, uh, for ADA access. We have no conference room or emergency operations center really designated. So this is our overcrowded detective bureau on the left side. Which is using a folding table to meet and discuss cases with evidence on there. And on the right side, you can see a wood table in the basement of the building that Paul Taylor regularly uses with that phone there. Um, they use for emergency operations, but really does not have the technology available. Oftentimes there's water and leaves coming in from the doors, this is in the basement. There's no place in our station to have conference rooms, sensitive personal meetings, or interviews or strategic planning. So a lack of workout or fitness area. This room was probably thriving back in, in the nineteen seventies and eighties, was a big draw for officers. Ability to work out, exercise, not on duty, but, but off duty helps, uh, officer wellness and mental health. This area in the basement has had rossage in it as well. Equipment does not work, cables are broken, ceiling tiles, as you may be able to see in there are missing or too low. You can't raise the equipment over your head, anything that's left there is approximately fifty years old. Big problem we have, evidence rooms. We have four evidence rooms at the station which are minimally secured and falling apart. Photo on the left faintly shows the water damage that comes in from under the door into the property room. We don't have a, a property room large enough to handle evidence, property or even test narcotics. So you can see in these pictures, more property rooms, uh, ceilings are falling out or there are no ceilings. Evidence rooms are not secured, there's exposed wiring running through there. The accreditation process that we are attempting to go through requires so much more evidence, storage, security, and chain of custody for best practices. Jail operations, uh, the facility we have no longer meets the needs of the department. We cannot operate a full-service jail. We have a lot of extra space that is not being utilized and is falling apart. So we currently have areas right now that are not even monitored or recorded. In two thousand and twenty-three, three hundred and forty-seven people were processed, were arrested and processed on video or picture on the left at that computer. So it tells us there's a definite need for holding facility, but it's not what we currently have. So jail operations are all about security. Station security is compromised anytime a prisoner has walked through unsecure areas into our second floor interview room, which you can see on the right side. Prisoners are walked past officers, civilian employees, two exits and property before arriving in that interview room. And much like fire departments have a red, yellow, green zone station design. Police stations have secure areas for officers, limited security for civilians, and extreme lockdown for prisoners. And this process that we currently have has been violating that premise since nineteen seventy-seven the jail was opened. You can see on the left picture, the ceiling leaking, that's our video arraignment room. And since Zoom came, um, we've been doing a lot of video arraignment. So we need a, a secure room with technology and we've made that room work. There's tons of officers that use their cell phones just to zoom in, because we don't have the technology or capability in there. Talk about some structural problems here. And as you can see, the photo on the left has severe cracking in the masonry wall and that wall leads into the jail facility. Photo on the right shows the water damage and leaking of one of the janitorial closets, one of the four, they all look the same. And we picked this one, but the water damage over the years has likely led to mold issues, uh, behind the walls. Drainage problems have gotten considerably worse over the years. And water comes through the ceiling, not heavy to moderate rain storms. Picture on the right, uh, with the arrow, shows an image facing north. The masonry cracks in the front of the building, which you can see if you look closely, is step-cracking in the brick on the right side. Looks like it's ready to pull away from the building into west justice. Left photo shows water damage again, occurred in the secure property room. Photo on the right is actually attic space between police and fire station. It's amazing when looking through this building, seeing some of the old artifacts and relics. One portion of that attic had a base of a chandelier that was originally over the courthouse when we housed the court. Uh, and it shows that this building was never intended to fully be a police station. Both photos in this area are facing south. The stairwell on the left photo has water that runs down the wall causing bubbles and stairway landing. You can see the wall splitting and pulling apart if you look closely. Uh, that's occurring all over the station. We've done our best over the last year to cover and hide most of that in casual dirt with a thin piece of drywall. But behind, we know there are big problems. Picture on the right is an entrance ramp from our decaying handicap ramp. And on the bottom of both sides of the door, you can see the water damage has eaten away at the drywall. Foundation has moved, it's hard to open and close that door and oftentimes we'll have snow and water that flows in underneath. Parking's a problem downtown, always has been, but unsecure parking in our police station has caused issues. Over the year, we've had many encounters with people walking into the back lot, suspicious people. And it's around patrol cars and specialized equipment. During special events, we have, uh, parking and emergency lanes. And also there's no clear area for residents to park. So how will the fire police facility of the building improve upon, how would it impact the Trent Police Department? Well, when we talk about new facility guidelines, we can go to the International Association of Chiefs of Police. In a building has to fit the agency's operational and cultural needs, I think that's very important, operational and cultural. And the useful life of a new police facility should last at least fifty years. Of course, we're well past that in the next bullet, as, as most facilities continue to operate well to last in license plate. And we're forty-seven years past that license plate. And of course, it's because there's been the major changes in technology, building code requirements, security issues, HVAC and electrical. So we have to ask ourselves some questions. How would a new facility align with our department's overall strategic plan and service goals? What does our department need to make community-oriented policing work better with the community? And are operational standards or best practices of the department compromised through the use of our current facility? So number one and two, there are the first two bullets we're gonna get into extensively. But, but number three, our, our best practices compromised, of course, is the answer. Back in nineteen twenty-seven, there were no police standards. Police were learning as they went. Stations were built as fortresses or castles. There was no technology, no property, no transparency. So hopefully in these next few slides, we can show how we can accomplish operational standards and best practices with a new police facility. So when we look back, operational goals, what, first off, what are our goals, what's our mission? So I'll, I'll read it real quick to you, I don't know if you can see, it's the mission of the Trent Police Department to enhance and improve the quality of life in Trenton. By working with our citizens and community partners. To reduce crime, the fear of crime, preserve life, protect people, enforce the law, maintain order, keep the peace. And that, that, uh, has been in effect, that mission statement for a while, but we had to come up with our service goals. We had to identify them over the last year to make this important. So number one is community engagement. The, another one is to have highly trained officers. And third is provide a service second to none. So a little deeper, created on December eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, then President Obama, uh, created the Twenty-First Century Policing Task Force. Who was charged with identifying best practices and offering recommendations on how policing practices can promote effective crime reduction while building public trust. And these recommended pillars of best practice have become the standard in policing. And it withstood drastic political attention over the years. Every police training, policy, decision, and facility design takes into account the pillars identified by the task force. Which are building trust and legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology, social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, officer wellness and safety. So our question is, how can we combine our service goals that we listed there? And the six pillars to create the best station for our community and our officers? Well, let's create a new Trent Police Station based on the following goals and visions. Number one, a need to support community engagement, foster resident involvement and welcoming atmosphere. Two is to create modern spaces to have highly skilled and trained officers. Three is to utilize the latest technology to enhance service and protection within our neighborhoods. And four, support officer wellness and mental health. And I think if we can do this, we'll have a station that the community and the officers will be proud to call home. So, what do we need? The following slides are gonna give you a visual representation. And again, a reminder, these photos are giving you a general idea of the space and are not intended to depict actual, actual spaces. We actually give you a, a few to choose which one you like. So locker rooms. New locker room with lockers that can house all the officer's equipment and separate shower and changing areas for male and females. Today's lockers are much bigger and there's storage underneath, as you can see, they're weight, many different variations. Uh, many include power drying racks for vests, but we need something, uh, better than what we have. And here's a few examples right now, um, there's a floor plan, there's showers. The showers nowadays are not a communal shower like you see, they're individual stalls. There's, there's a lot of ideas. Now, the new trend is for general neutral, gender-neutral locker rooms and individual shower and changing areas. I'm still a little old school and I prefer separate areas for showers and, and men's and women's locker rooms, but we're gonna look at everything. Uh, our, our females did not have or don't have in our station and, um, and you can ask one of the members that was on our community, on our committee. Any area to change, uh, any area for nursing, um, there's a lot of things that we don't have that, uh, we can identify when we create these locker rooms. So a training room or community use room. So our need is for a full training room that can be utilized by officers as well as the community. Will be able to host training and host community events in, in, uh, in this area. We had an increase in training of fifty-eight percent in the last year, which is over four thousand hours of off-site training for officers that we want to bring back to the department. Again, many different variations, see, we could hold at least thirty-five, would allow us to host our entire department. And anything over thirty, we can host state training. Community groups, neighborhood watch, boy scouts, girl scouts, would all be able to utilize this safe space to hold meetings and further engage with the department and the officers. Wiring and storage is pretty simple, um, looks a lot cleaner than what we had in the basement on our earlier slides. Uh, but wiring with internet capabilities throughout the building and storage areas for police equipment. Stores for duty bags, weapons, tasers, drones, body cams are all needed and they need dedicated spaces. And none of these were items back in nineteen twenty-seven. ADA compliance, a new entry in lobby with no barriers, ADA confined access if footprint large enough for a single level service, if, if we could do that. Adding second floor would be out of necessity. Stairwells and elevator mechanical units add wasted square footage. The goal is to have a single story with inviting lobby and any barriers would be built outside of the design. So emergency operations center, conference rooms containing up-to-date technology and equipment. An emergency operations center or EOC should be a standalone room that doubles as a real-time crime center that can loop in video feeds from across the city in one room. With this space, you'd be able to readily handle any emergency and city event, plus monitor live feeds and video to enhance safety. And conference rooms, of course, are a necessity for meetings and sensitive discussions. Evidence rooms, as mentioned earlier, we have four small minimally secured evidence rooms. We need one space to test, bag, label evidence before it's stored. And the storage times differ, so it can be months to permanent. But our need is to have one secure room that meets the size and standards for a police agency. Best practice for chain of custody allows only a minimal number of officers to handle and have access to evidence. The standard, which you see here, is pass-through lockers. Uh, they're retrieved and placed into storage by the property officer on the opposite side. This is an accreditation standard that we are gonna have to adopt. So our statistics show us that a holding facility is needed, and we talked about that earlier, three hundred and forty-seven people were booked. But in two thousand and twenty-three, we housed two hundred and sixty people. The difference is, and we housed it for four hundred and fifty-six days. Many were booked and released, uh, based on new laws, but we did house two hundred and sixty in basement for four hundred and fifty-six days. So a smaller jail or holding facility is needed. Trent is now a pre-arraignment facility, post-arraignment prisoners are sent to Wayne County. So we, we reduced the maximum twenty-bed facility we have now for the five to six short-term stay. And again, noted earlier about our current interview room, the old jail facility is needed with secure, hard-to-interview rooms inside. And, uh, to reduce jail building, be a complete audio and video system as well. So workout, fitness area. Some people may think this is a luxury, this is actually something in all police stations, fire stations and, and many businesses. It, it's very common for training in mental health and wellness. And I attached a picture of a mat room as, as well, so mats, uh, required for defense and tactics training that we have to do annually. Not only do these spaces keep our officers physically fit, trained on the latest tactics, but they're a stress reliever, a stress reliever. And they promote positive mental health and wellbeing. And mental health and wellness is one of the six pillars that's receiving the most attention lately due to the unfortunate rates of suicide among law enforcement officers. So we talked about secure parking and a new station design should include some gated parking areas for officers and patrol cars and also carports. But clearly defined and designated public areas as well. And the last bullet point, we talked about infrastructure for EV or electric vehicles, solar panels on carports. So I, I wanna show you the next slide, so we, on the right side, we just have carports there. But on the left, we've got carports and what we talked about the future, we need to build this station to last fifty years and we have to look forward. So we look at solar ability, um, so the infrastructure has to be there. Studies show that electric vehicles are on the horizon, uh, even more so than now. And I don't believe enough studies have been done on patrol vehicles, but we need to have this infrastructure in place. And, uh, the question mark down there, I, I want people to think, well, we're putting panels on now, panels can be done later. But it, it's the, uh, infrastructure that's needed. That's our neighbors to the west, that's Brownstown PD with all those solar panels on their carport. So it isn't far off, it's right next door. So I can give examples of buildings from, from different extremes. I love the old style look of our station and we wanna make sure that architects design it with a screen and location line. But a modern police station has to be inviting, it has to be accessible, and it has to be able to handle the needs of the department and the community for the next fifty-plus years. So again, I appreciate everyone's time sitting here listening to me go on and on about our current problems of the station and what it could look like in the future. I'm always open for questions and if anyone would like to see the station near, we'll be having tours, uh, as well as during the street fair, then those will be posted. So I appreciate your time, it must've been a long day, but if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you very much, Chief, I really appreciate everything and I think I, I feel very comfortable speaking for all of council. Um, and saying that, you know, we appreciate all the work that your entire department has put into this so far. Um, you guys know what you need a lot better than we do, um, so we need all the information we can get, so. Does anyone have any, I don't know if from council have any questions, comments, uh, thoughts here first, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I really enjoyed this, this was extremely thorough. And it was everything that I, I had been looking for and hoping that you all would present this and very well done. Very well done and you and your team did a wonderful job.
Well, I appreciate it, but it was a lot of the help of, of those people over there and our, our, when we make decisions like this, these decisions are gonna far outlast me. So we had also had three years on that if, if this happens, see this out. So we're trying to take input from, from everybody and, um, I, I appreciate their, their help as well.
Thank you very much, it was very good.
Yes, Chief, uh, when, when you discussed, uh, safety for everything, for the employees, general public. But also to save you, the, uh, electronic data is important. I don't think you, you kinda touched on it, but I really think the security of that is very, very important. The way you guys are set up now, you're putting yourself out there, kind of be, uh, pat, so to speak. And I just think that's important and I think it's a great job that you addressed it, so I just wanted to say thank you for thinking of that.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it and I, I give credit to the previous administrations and the police department. They, they've tried to, to live forward what we can, but any, any new build would, would definitely take into account and, um, not only with the electronic data, but all of storage.
Anyone else from council have questions?
Sure, Alan, you got one?
I've lived through three generations of changing standards for sentencing to jail, and I'm including watching it here, fifty years ago. And is there, do you have it set up so you can expand your, your holding cell? And you have even plans for designs, because I can see the core changing as, you know, move downtown to after arraignment, it's real quick, like, uh, Wayne County. Do we have a potential to expand our holding cell?
So the, the question would be, do we have a potential to expand? Right now, we really don't with the way it's set up. When we set anything up, we wanna set things for the future and I don't think it's right to ask taxpayers to fund space for other departments, prisoners. But right now, we're, we would be looking at ours and it would incorporate a whole different build that we can monitor these people securely and safely. But everything we do would be looking out of, of where can we be in ten years, twenty years, fifty years? And all of that would, would go into account, especially when we build this jail facility.
Anyone else got anything?
Open to the public?
Sure.
You gotta manage momentum, if I gamble you down, you know. If I gamble you down, you know.
Just the, uh, and I know some of this is way for mature, but location, is it dependent upon, is the police more dependent upon a central location than say fire? And, and is it, uh, administration's idea to keep the fire, police combined or?
Well, if you're asking a question to the administration, I'm not gonna speak for them. But, but I will tell you that, that this, um, this proposal, obviously, a centralized location for everybody in the city would be ideal. And a central location would be somewhere in the, the four-street west road area. You know, our officers are fortunate that we respond from our vehicles, uh, the majority of the time. So I think you're gonna hear in, in two weeks how important that is to the fire department. And as we work through this, um, you know, we'll, we'll see what the options are and work through the situation.
You got more for me or something?
Cool.
Did he answer your question?
Yeah.
I can answer it for you.
Anyone from public, Amy, is that a question? Well, you got let off easy, all right, Chief, but I do want to just again say thank you very much to you and the entire department for all the work on this. It's been a long slog and something you guys have needed and deserved for decades down. We just hope that we can make that happen. So for folks watching at home, do want to make sure, just again as a reminder, our next council meeting, two weeks from tonight, ensuing study session will be at the fire station downtown, where Chief Anderson will also be presenting what this means from the fire department perspective, too. But as Chief Hawkins said, too, we'll be doing tours as needed and then throughout the street fair, so folks have an opportunity to see as much of the nitty-gritty as we can show, for why this is so important to the department for long after we're all gone here. So if you have anything else to close out, Chief, or anything like that?
Okay, thank you. If anybody has any questions or certain things to reach out, we'll stay on the street department, private work, we will be scheduled for something during the street fair a couple of times.
Great, thank you very much. I guess we'll actually get a call for public comments, it's a public meeting, anyone wishing to speak, please limit your comments to five minutes, begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me. Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:30 PM. Moved and supported, and council, don't go anywhere, because we have a closed session after, along with Elizabeth, Kevin. We're going to go in the room down the hall.